Well, good evening and welcome to the League of Women Voters of Laramie County Candidate Forum. Tonight, we'll hear from candidates running for the Fort Collins City Council. I'm Mary Bowman from the League of Women Voters of Laramie County, and I will serve as the moderator this evening. This forum is being livestreamed, broadcasted, and recorded by the wonderful folks at FCTV. The recording will be available later on the League's website, L W V dash Laramie County dot org, and also at Vote411.org. For everyone in the room, please silence your phones. In addition, the use of your cellphones to record audio or video is not allowed. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages our members to be active in local government. The League does not endorse political parties nor candidates. When a League member is a candidate, they are treated the same as other candidates and not included in any part of the planning for the forum. Eight candidates are running for three open seats on the city council, one each in districts one, three, and five. Council members are selected by registered voters within their respective districts. A ranked choice voting method will be used in districts one and three, but not district five where only two candidates are on the ballot. All candidates are joining us tonight, and they are in order of appearance on the ballot, starting on my left. Christopher Conway, Susan Gatauski, and Daisy Montgomery from District One. From District Three, Joshua Fudge, Lance Smith, and Stephen Urrash. And from District Five, Amy Hoven and Zoel Lane. During the forum, candidates will have 90 seconds to give an introductory statement. Each candidate will then answer a series of questions and have 60 seconds for their answers. Then, the candidates will give 60-second closing statements. Candidates, we ask you to adhere to the time limits, and to help you to do that, our League volunteer and president, Pat Berger, who is sitting right there, will hold up a yellow sign to indicate when you have 15 seconds remaining. She'll hold up a red stop sign when your time is up. Thank you to our audience for joining us, both in person and those watching at home. For our in-person audience, in order to allow the maximum amount of time for questions, we ask that you do not express support or dislike for an answer or candidate. Please hold your applause until the end of the forum. The candidates have not seen the questions they will be asked this evening. Our in-person audience has the opportunity to submit questions for the candidates. League volunteers have provided you with cards. Please write your questions on the cards, one question per card, and then hold it up. A League volunteer will collect the cards and bring them to the League Question Sorters, who will edit for clarity and repetition if needed. We most likely will not have time for all the questions, but the candidates have agreed to stay afterwards for a meet and greet, and you'll have the opportunity to speak with them then. So, that's it for the ground rules and the introductions, and we'll now begin with the 90-minute opening statements from each of the candidates. Candidate Conway, we're going to begin with you, and then we will go left to right around the deus. Candidate Conway?
Yeah, thank you, guys. So, I'm Chris Conway, and I'm running for city council in District One. I grew up here in District One, and I'm a teacher who understands the economic struggles that families face every day. My childhood was full of opportunities, and I'd like to see that extended to families today. But budgets are tight these days, and many families are so squeezed that they're forced out of the city. I've walked up and down every street of the district, talking to voters, and affordability has been rated the top concern every single time. Those people who are expressing that concern deserve to be listened to, and that's what I plan to do. I have a new vision that puts the people who make Fort Collins great at the center, and that's our teachers, our nurses, our seniors, and our working families. I've served the community as a teacher, as a board member of Habitat for Humanity, the Historic Preservation Commission, and I'm a founding member of YIMBY Fort Collins, where I've worked with leaders at the city and the state level on good housing policy, which is why I think I've been honored to garner the support of the vast majority of Laramie County's leaders. District One is growing, and it deserves the same kind of amenities that the rest of the city does, parks, trails, and natural areas, and they deserve an energetic leader who listens and delivers, and that's what I hope to do. Thank you.
Susan Gatauski?
Sure. Good to see you here. Thanks for coming. I think we're going to have fun tonight. My name is Susan Gatauski, and I have lived in Fort Collins since 1979. Taught for Pooter School District for 26 years before then getting into my public service. I've served six years already on city council, and promising and delivering safe, clean, livable neighborhoods. And prior to that, though, I served eight years on the school board, the PSD school board. So I bring 14 years of governance experience and institutional knowledge that is going to be very, very helpful in my next four years. So, I would say that, you know, good intentions and pictures of endorsements on web pages just can't compare to on-the-job experience. So, I would invite you to check my website at Susan dash Gatauski, and read the letters from colleagues and friends who describe the work that I've been doing, my accomplishments during my 14 years of service as a public servant. I love Fort Collins. I love working on city council and would enjoy doing that for more years. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Montgomery?
Hello, my name is Daisy Montgomery, and I am running for District One. And I've lived here for seven years after my husband, who's a disabled combat veteran, left service. And we chose Fort Collins because they have autism center-based programs. I served in a, with the federal government for 13 years, managing multi-hundred-million-dollar budgets, which gave me a lot of experience in making really hard decisions when it comes to large budgets for programs, realizing that sometimes we have to make really hard decisions when it hurts, even when we don't want to. I am a small business owner, and I understand the needs of both the worker but also the small business owner. And oftentimes, we don't balance those needs very well. I also work very heavily with the disabled population, especially the neurodivergent population. I'm on the Board of Directors for the Autism Society, as well as the Vice Chair for the Disability Advisory Board. I'm running because I don't feel like the everyday working American in Fort Collins is really heard or listened to. We are facing stagnating wages. Tariffs are crushing our businesses, as well as excessive regulations. And in northeast Fort Collins, we don't have safety infrastructure whatsoever, such as biking lanes, crosswalks, and our housing affordability is nonexistent, as well as, I would like to continue the Halligan Water Project so we have clean water for the next 53 years. Thank you.
Candidate Fudge?
Thank you. Good evening. Thanks for having me to the League of Women Voters, and thanks for watching. I know you could be watching football right now, so I appreciate you all being here and taking an interest in this. My name is Josh Fudge. I'm running for the city council in the third district on the southeast part of town. For 20 years, I have been a local government finance, budget, and policy professional, including the last 10 years for Laramie County. In that role, I help our commissioners manage and put together their budget, due process improvement, strategic planning, performance measurement, and things of that nature. In what little spare time I have, I volunteer with the Pooter Library District, where I am a member of the Board of Trustees. We are currently working on building the Southeast Community Center in the third district, so that's very exciting. I also volunteer at the Food Bank for Laramie County, and I'm a marching band dad on the pick crew for the Fossil Ridge Marching Band. The reasons I've gotten into the race are similar to some of the ones that we've heard. Housing affordability has been the top issue. When I've been out speaking to voters, I've met many who want their children to be able to live here, want to be able to downsize and remain in our community. The city's budget struggles, which began back in the spring, also piqued my interest. Being a budget professional, I think I have the experience to make sure we're making really good decisions with the budget and that we're ensuring that the taxpayers are getting the value for their services. My other main priority is parks and culture. I too use the parks. My older son worked at Fossil Creek Park this summer and had a blast doing that. And then efficiency and process improvement. I think our employees are very dedicated, capable employees. I think if we can get out of their way and really let them do their work well, I think that's the direction we want to go. So I hope to earn your vote in November. Thank you.
Candidate Smith?
Good evening. I am Lance Smith. I think I know some of you out there. I think those of you who know me well would kind of agree with my assessment that I am an analytical civil servant. I care deeply about our community, its people, our environment. And it's a little weird to be sitting up here, because I did actually work for the city for 14, or over 12 years. And it's a little different perspective sitting up here. I was your utility finance director. I would like to get used to this position, though. That's why I'm trying to run for District Three seat. As Josh mentioned, there are some fiscal challenges that the city's dealing with. We've not been living within our means for the past few years. Those challenges are going to carry over to this new council, and I think my experience working in the city gives me an idea of how the city functions. I think that will serve the new council well, as we improve the fiscal health of the community. I see you've only got 15 seconds, so I'll get to my priorities, I guess, later, but thank you very much.
Candidate Urrash?
Hi, I'm Steve Urrash. I've lived in Fort Collins since 2003. I have three kids and two grandkids. They all live in California. I have a BS degree in physics from San Jose State University. I've had a 38-year career in the chip industry as an engineer, 23 years of them at Intel. I have served on the Laramie County Board of Health and the Fort Collins Electric Board, so public service is very important to me. I am the founder and chairman of the Colorado Center Party. We are the voice of the moderate majority. And I would also say that I'm the only candidate in District Three who is not a government employee. I am running because the citizens in Fort Collins need a voice for those who signed the petition to undo the city council's change in the land use code. I think the number-one issue is excessive growth in the city, and that's borne out by all of the people that I talk to when I go precinct, walking door to door. So I think we should limit the higher-density housing, because it will affect our neighborhood character adversely. Nor do we have the water for it. There's a problem with the NISP reservoir. The Fort Collins Loveland Water District has pulled out, or is potentially pulling out, of NISP.
Candidate Hoven?
Thank you very much, and thank you to the League for holding this forum tonight, and I appreciate the opportunity to participate. I'm Amy Hoven, and I'm running for city council because I love this city and I know it well. I am a fourth-generation Coloradan, and I've lived in Fort Collins and District Five most of my life. I went to Bennett Elementary. I graduated from CSU. And for the past nearly 20 years, I've been living, working, and volunteering in the community I love. I have a diverse array of professional experience, including working for many small businesses, working in the nonprofit sector, and for the past decade, I have been proudly serving as an immigration advocate, primarily working with first-generation and immigrant students in our community. I have a degree and lots of work experience in the field of communications and problem-solving. And my primary skills that I will bring to council is a combination of those two, of utilizing my communication skills to bring people together to have conversations, and utilizing and leveraging my relationships of the many experts, many people who are experts in this community, to solve problems. I know that when I bring these two skills together and utilize them to my strengths, great things happen. Thank you.
Candidate Lane?
Hi, thank you so much. So, my name is Zoel Lane. I'm running for city council at Fort Collins, District Five, and I'm running because I think that the affordability problem here in the city is getting to a point where we can't come back from. A lot of people here in the city, myself included, can't afford to buy a home, raise a family, or retire here in the community they call home, and that is simply unacceptable. I immigrated here from Canada. I worked for the County of DeKalb in Atlanta. I worked in nonprofits, and now I work at CSU in international programs. I have seen directly how social services can change the lives of a family, how a lot of people don't understand what programs they are eligible for, and how hard it is for immigrant communities to integrate here and become stable. I have also been advocating with our state legislature for union employees and have seen the difference that unionization and bringing dignity to workers here in the city truly makes in people's lives, and I think that we need to support that on a larger scale. We need to raise minimum wage, promote affordable housing along transit corridors, and truly Trump-proof the city for us moving forward. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. We'll now move into the question segment of the forum, where each candidate will have 60 seconds to respond to the question. Candidate Lane, we're going to start this round with you, and then go in reverse order. So, the first question is, what do you see as the most urgent challenge facing our community in the coming years, and what specific steps would you take to address it?
Absolutely. So I think I did just touch on this, in that affordability is really our number-one issue. So we have a lot of people here in Fort Collins who are getting priced out of their rentals, that can't afford to buy a home, and a lot of people stuck in homes now when they'd like to downsize. So I think that we need to start opening up zoning along high-transit corridors and improving our transit system to accommodate those people. We need to improve permitting processes for those kinds of buildings, as well as allowing for parking restrictions to be changed, to allow for those buildings to go up as well without taking up a lot of land. I also think that we need to work with the county more closely to make permanent their senior home tax credit, so that seniors are able to move freely throughout the county and downsize to open up already-made supply of homes. And in doing this, I think it's a great first step. Thank you.
Candidate Conway?
Yeah, so I've talked to many voters across the district, and I think it's pretty clear through the surveys that the city's done that affordability is the top issue facing Fort Collins, and we're not alone in that. We simply don't have enough housing options to house all the people we want to house, and that's causing all kinds of issues along affordability lines. So we need to make it easier to permit affordable housing of all different types, especially around transit. We need to relax zoning rules to make it easier to build the kind of things that people can afford. And I really think about this as also an environmental challenge as well. If we do not make it easier to build infill housing, we will sprawl out into surrounding areas and destroy the wild places and the agricultural lands that are a big part of why Fort Collins is special. So, thank you.
Candidate Gatauski?
Right. You know, I hear about the desire to build more and more housing, and what I worry about is matching our water with the building. I think that's probably the most urgent thing. I believe that we need to make sure that, as we build, that we have available water, storage for the future, and, you know, I'm just thinking, and not focusing on density, but rather on careful planning, too, so that we don't run out. That's one of the things that is probably going to be, stand in the way of our ability to survive as a city, and I don't want to put us in that position.
Candidate Montgomery?
I wasn't pressing it hard enough. Certainly affordability is an issue, but I think, like, what does affordability really entail? So, we have an aging population, and our population isn't really growing. And due to the affordability issue, our bedroom communities are growing. So Loveland, Timneth, Wellington, Greeley, they are growing. And so, they are becoming more economically prosperous while we are losing businesses to them, like Costco. They are gaining more jobs. People are going to them for jobs. We're losing revenue. So it's not just, oh, it's affordability, it's a whole chain reaction of things that are impacting us economically.
Candidate Fudge?
Thank you. So affordability is the key issue for me. I agree with a lot of what has been said. We need more choices and available density in a lot of our urban corridors, especially. Areas, like has been mentioned, are set up for transit access, so Midtown Fort Collins, Harmony Corridor, and other, you know, perhaps, urban corridors. Zoning and rural flexibility, I think, is something we can look at, not necessarily relaxing all of the standards, but really finding that sweet spot between making a project feasible while also protecting the environment and enhancing affordability. Traffic is another issue, of course, and that's one reason that density is a great thing to improve on, so that people aren't driving into Fort Collins from Timneth and Windsor. We at the county have issues with affordability. We hire deputies who are providing law enforcement for our community, and they can't even afford to live in Laramie County, let alone in the city of Fort Collins. And so, this is an issue I would like to tackle, and the city has a roadmap for Proposition 123 to comply with, and I'd like to focus on making that in other areas as well.
Candidate Smith?
I certainly agree that affordability is a challenge. I think the most immediate challenge is some fiscal accountability. As I mentioned, the city has been living beyond its means. Three years ago, the general fund had cash reserves of $85 million. It's projected by the end of this year, we'll have $42 million. That's not sustainable. Staff has proposed some solutions to the near-term budget needs. Those include reducing salary increases next year and deferring some maintenance, which I support. Staff has also recommended, there's been discussion about looking at the grocery sales tax rebate program and trying to right-size that. They've also talked about not providing helmets to kids in the bike safety program. I think it's important that the city leadership aligns any necessary reductions with council priorities and community needs. Thanks.
Candidate Urrash?
The most important issue nationally is the federal debt. That is a time bomb that will go off at some point and create a financial disaster in this country. The government, the federal government, has been living beyond its means. I don't want to see the city, government, living beyond its means either, because that can cause huge problems. So, housing affordability is a problem locally, but it's also an issue nationally, and it's driven by high-interest rates, which are largely caused by the government, and also material, raw material costs, right? There are also costs due to water tap fees. Those are going to be sky-high if we are going to pay $2.7 billion for the Northern Integrated Supply Project, which I previously mentioned the Fort Collins Loveland Water District may be getting out of because of the costs.
Candidate Hoven?
Thank you very much for the question. Affordability is absolutely crucial, and I'll also say that many issues that are facing us today intersect, and affordability and workforce development are crucial to the overall health and well-being of our community. And I want to work with the experts, housing experts. I want to work with workforce development experts to really make sure that we create processes and we create possibilities that really set our community up to thrive. Thank you.
Thanks. Candidate Hoven, we're going to begin with you for question two, and this is an environmental question that brings in parts of a question from the audience and parts of a League question. Would you support or oppose a policy to ban the sale of single-use plastic water bottles under one gallon in Fort Collins? Please explain your reasoning.
Thank you for the question. And considering the budget constraints that we are currently under, I would want to get more research, to really understand the economic impacts of what a decision like this would have on our community, because we are facing some challenging times, and I do want to do what's the most sustainable and the most impactful for our environment. We all love our trails and our open space, and we all want to protect it as much as we can, and being as responsible as possible with our budget to make sure it reflects our values while still maintaining it as a realistic budget would be something I would like to see first.
Candidate Urrash, you're next.
No, I would not support a ban on the sale of plastic bottles. It's the most cost-effective solution at this point for delivering products to customers who want something cheap. I would be very willing to look at whether we could, at the state level, get suppliers to use recyclable, corn-based plastics in the bottles, and I think that would be a much better solution rather than an outright ban at this point. But it's much larger than just the city of Fort Collins. I think we need to do something at the state level.
Candidate Smith?
I would say that this sounds like a reasonable solution to a problem we have, but I think I would oppose the idea of banning plastic water bottles, while, well, while encouraging recycling. I mean, we do, as a community, have some ambitious climate goals, and a lot of that is around waste diversion. So I would certainly promote recycling and as much waste diversion as possible, but I don't think it's practical to ban small water bottles.
Candidate Fudge?
I would also oppose a ban on single-use plastic water bottles. I think in the visiting voters that I've been doing around the district are already having a hard time with a lot of things government is telling them they can and can't do at this point. So while I'm sympathetic to the issue and under- So, while I'm sympathetic to the issue and understand the climate impacts of plastic, I would agree we should promote recycling and waste diversion. But at this time, with everything else that voters and our citizens and residents are dealing with, I would not support a ban on those bottles.
Candidate Montgomery?
What concerns me about banning the single-use plastic water bottles is really our nonprofits that serve families in need. In particular, people who need hot meals, or water, or things of that nature. It sounds, again, we all love our environment, and we do a lot, like, we got rid of the single-use plastic bags, and we all do a lot to protect our environment. But I think in practice, we would hit a lot of real challenges when it comes to serving our people that really need them the most. Thank you.
Candidate Gatauski?
Well, as it turns out, the city of Fort Collins is conducting its own pilot, and I guess you would call it banning, single-use plastic water bottles in any of the, well, any of the events that we sponsor. I noticed that we have these, but I assume that it's the League of Women Voters' plastic and not the city. I personally brought my aluminum bottle, and on a norm, I do my own personal water bottle. I think that I really avoid bans of any sort because of the unintended consequences, unless we really think it through. So at this point, I would say, no, I would oppose a ban.
Candidate Conway?
Yeah, I'm extremely sympathetic to the idea that we need to reduce waste in our society, especially plastic waste, given the health risks that microplastics are causing across our society. I think we don't totally understand what effect that has on the health of people. But I think there are probably better ways to tackle this problem. When I think about environmentalism, which has been a lifelong kind of endeavor for me, I think about providing people better options. Like, I genuinely think there are much better positive options that we can present to people. Reusable bottles, more water filling stations around the city. And I've worked on some of this stuff, when I've worked on homeless issues around the city, where we're trying to provide people better options, in terms of places that they can go to get water publicly. And so, that's the kind of direction I'd like to go. I always want to look for kind of more like win-win solutions, so that things are more, so that the, like, green alternative is the more convenient and the easier option to choose.
Candidate Lane?
Hi. I think it's absolutely necessary for us to find a more sustainable alternative to single-use plastic water bottles. But originally, single-use plastic actually came into being because companies decided it would be cheaper for them to use them, rather than glass, and to put the marketing of it as it's the individual's, it's their duty to recycle, they can save the planet. I think we need to transition away from placing the complete burden on the individual, and start looking at how the city of Fort Collins can look at some of the bigger businesses and corporations to achieve sustainability and to reach our goals by 2030, rather than a single person. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll turn to question three, and candidate Yurash, you'll begin this round. This is a general question. How does your expertise in the community set you apart as a candidate?
So, in District 3, I'm the only candidate who is not a government employee. And so I have business experience, what it takes to understand how private businesses operate. I have served, though, on the Laramie County Board of Health and the Fort Collins Electric Board, so I could see what county and city government was like and how some of the services are provided. When I was on the Board of Health, I did more ride-alongs on the different services that we provide than any other board member. When I was on the Electric Board, I visited the Rahide Power Plant. So, I think mostly being able to see it from a non-government perspective, I think, is very important, and we need a voice like that on council.
Candidate Hoven, you're next.
Thank you for the question. My expertise sets me aside. I have a long career in helping bring people together to solve some of our most challenging issues. My time as an immigration advocate, I have worked among teams that are solving that issue here locally. We have established eviction funds within the city to really help prevent people being homeless, and I've also helped with a mentoring program at CSU that really addresses bridging gaps of education, workforce, and really making sure that everybody's voice is heard and everyone has a seat at the table. And my experience, I'll continue to use it, I'll continue to protect vulnerable populations, and I'll really build on the community's resources and strengths that make us such a wonderful city.
Candidate Lane?
Hi. So, I think the key thing that sets me apart here is that I'd be the first renter to represent a predominantly renter district, as well as the only renter that would be sitting on council. I think that voice is incredibly important. I also am one of the many working professionals here in the city, making less than a livable wage, working full-time, and am part of a lot of the vulnerable communities that we're trying to set out to protect. I think that it's really key that when we're having conversations about people, we're including those people in those conversations. Thank you.
Candidate Conway?
Yeah, so, I grew up in the city and I'm a teacher here, and I think that is kind of the most valuable perspective I bring. I like to tell a story about my friend Brianna, who actually went to the school that I teach at. Her mom's a school psychologist. And she, when she graduated, she went and decided to pursue a career in education. And so when she graduated from college, she actually came back and is now the second-grade teacher at the school that I work at. Unfortunately, when her and her husband were looking to start a life together, they couldn't afford to live in the community that they grew up in, and so they were forced to live in Greeley where they could afford it. So she drives 40 minutes each day to work, and that's not an uncommon experience for teachers living in our community. That's really different than the Fort Collins I remember growing up. And I think that experience of growing up in a place where Fort Collins was an amazing place to raise the family, it was cheap and affordable. I know it's possible, and I know it's something we can achieve if we put our minds to it.
Candidate Gatauski?
Good question. I have, although I had expertise coming into this job, I have drawn my expertise from on-the-job experience. I am the only incumbent among the candidates. I know what it was like when I first started. It was like drinking from a fire hose, and I believe that's probably what's going to happen with others who are elected. But being on multiple commissions, being, working with the URA, the Urban Renewal Authority, talking to people, but most importantly, listening to what the people want, rather than telling them what they want, I think is an essence of expertise that just can't be matched. The job of city council is extremely complex and multifaceted, and it just takes time and experience, and I believe in this case, experience matters.
Candidate Montgomery?
I think the biggest differentiator that I bring to this race is that I am diagnosed autistic, and that gives me a very unique view and perspective of issues. I am also a job creator, and what I mean by that is, not only am I a small business owner, but I am also the head of the new chapter of the Neurodiversity Chamber of Commerce that will be opening quarter one, 2026. And so, that will be giving jobs and creating jobs in partnership with businesses, CSU, PSD, and other entities in the area, to create more jobs for people who may not have had the opportunity to have jobs in the past. And I think that's incredibly important work. Thank you.
Candidate Fudge?
So I think my main qualification is the experience I have developing partnerships. Currently at work, I'm participating on a group with UC Health, Pooter School District, City of Fort Collins, and Colorado State, to help educate the public on the interrelatedness of the federal funding that all of our organizations receive, and the impact on our quality of life, should those organizations be impacted significantly. UC Health will be impacted significantly as a result of the Big Beautiful Bill. The other organizations have been impacted and will be impacted, and CSU may be impacted quite substantially. I also manage the county's American Rescue Plan Act funds, dealing with nonprofit organizations to create really good projects that helped a lot of underrepresented folks in our community. And so, we are going to have to work together with all of our organizations and jurisdictions to help maintain the quality of life, and to make us resilient against the chaos and the incompetence at the federal level.
Candidate Smith?
As I mentioned at the beginning, I did serve as the city's utility finance director for 12 years. Our city has very ambitious climate goals, and while I was with the city, I worked hard to make sure that we could adequately fund those goals, but also keep our utility rates very low. One of the innovative things we did was recognize that as a community, we wanted to get to 100% renewable energy, but we also knew that that meant higher costs. So, we worked hard to develop a low-income qualified rate, which allowed us as a community to move where we wanted to move, but also recognized that some of our residents couldn't afford that. And so I think bringing that type of innovation to this side of the table would be great.
Candidate Smith, let's start with you for this next round of questions, of the question, and this one's on water use. In anticipation of water shortages, should the city have a more aggressive tiered pricing system to discourage excessive use of drinking water on lawns?
I think the city has, is served by three different water districts. The council controls the rates for one of those three water districts only. So it's not possible for the city to impose something upon the whole community. Two of the special districts do appreciate the city's water conservation plans and efforts. So I think that we could take an approach of trying to encourage conservation. We do currently have tiered water rates that do punish those who are using an excessive amount of water. But we're also a nonprofit, and so we can't simply punitively impose rates upon folks. So I think we need to take a more deliberate approach, and not simply add a higher tier, and think that that's going to solve the problem.
Candidate Fudge?
I would agree. I would focus more on conservation efforts as well, rather than higher-tiered rates for water. Again, our residents have faced cost increases for nearly everything over the past few years, and so rapidly increasing water rates is something I would probably have to take very strong consideration of, and may not necessarily be in favor of. I think as far as water use, density helps with that. It helps reduce the need for lawns, and so that's one way to help conserve water as well, and continuing or even bolstering programs to promote zero-scaping and things of that nature. So that's what I would support.
Candidate Montgomery?
People are really struggling right now with the increased cost of groceries and pretty much everything else. I agree that increasing the rates isn't really going to make a difference. I think that education, but also being a bit more transparent about, like, maybe having a dashboard where we can actually see, the public can see, what is the effect on our actual water supply for every time you take, like, a two-hour-long shower, or if you use excessive amounts of water watering your lawn. I think having a visual representation of the actual impact would really bring that picture together, instead of just increasing rates, so then people can make their own decisions and actually see the impact themselves.
Candidate Gatauski?
Yeah, I don't think that punishing our consumers, our water users, is the answer. We recently, council actually recently, approved the Water Efficiency Program. Lot of, lot of work, and then offering ways to conserve. One particular one is, well, zero-scape, newer forms of grasses that use less water, just changes in landscaping that enable our residents to get into the idea of conservation without a punitive approach to their water use. And I think that that's probably the better approach. Education is the key. I think people in our community are very, very much in favor of supporting conservation if they know how.
Candidate Conway?
Yeah, I think water is a huge issue in our community, and I think, I think it makes sense to look in other places than to increase rates, especially given the affordability challenges in the city. I think we have not even totally scratched the surface in terms of educating people on conservation, on how to, how they can make a beautiful yard that uses less water. And so I think, I think that's an important way to go, rather than increasing prices.
Candidate Lane?
Yeah, I think that conserving water, not only for drinking, but for protection against wildfires moving forward, is incredibly important. And in that, to that end, I think that we need to look at more creative solutions into increasing those reserves and not using drinking water on yards. So, like rainwater irrigation, that's something that my building uses, and I think that the city could get a lot more involved in trying to promote other practices in residential uses, so that we do protect our drinking water without having to overly burden the taxpayer.
Candidate Hoven?
Thank you very much for the question, and I really do agree with much of what has been said on the panel so far, that I would focus too on conservation efforts, and really evaluate the cost in doing such a move, considering our economic times. Thanks.
Candidate Yurash?
So, whiskey is for drinking and water is for fighting. And I think many of us in Colorado have heard that before, because it's true, right? Water is very important, and I think the water is going to continue to be a problem, and that's why we should not continue to grow our population as rapidly as we have been. I think, to me, and the people that I talk to in District 3, that's obvious. And so, the tap fees for new development are going to be sky-high because of the costs involved in creating the new dams. To the tiered rate structure, we probably need some sort of gradual tiered rate, because larger properties will use more, and the only way to encourage them to conserve is through the rate structure. And I don't like it, but there may not be any alternative, like I said, except to stop growth.
Candidate Fudge, you'll be first for this next question on DEI. Is the city's DEI program meeting the needs of the Hispanic community in Fort Collins? And please explain your answer.
I definitely support continuing on with DEI programs. I don't know that it's meeting the needs of its residents. I hope that it's not a case... I hope that it's not a case of a lot of window dressing and a lot of talk without actually reaching out to those communities and learning their needs and making sure that they are served just as equally and with full representation as everyone else in our community. I know the Fort Collins Chamber of Commerce has recently set up a Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. And so that'll be a good asset to help the city use. And as far as DEI in general, I know there's been a lot of attacks on it at the federal level. And I would absolutely support the city continuing those efforts, especially not just in words and flashy graphics and things of that nature, but actually living that in our values.
Candidate Smith, you're next.
I think diversity, equity, and inclusion. I think it's important to say that. It does serve our community. It represents our community. Whether our current efforts are fully meeting the needs of our Hispanic community, I'm not sure, but I wouldn't think that it is necessarily doing that at this point. It needs to be an ongoing effort. And so I would support continuing the current DEI efforts. And I would support continuing outreach with that Hispanic community to understand how we can better serve their needs.
Candidate Yurash?
Well, I was a member of the Board of Health. I visited the Salud Health Center, which largely serves underserved community, low income, and mostly Hispanic. And I thought they did a very good job in providing health care to those who need it and often cannot afford it. That's not necessarily a DEI program. I also own three condos in northern Colorado that I rent out as investment properties. One of them is in Greeley, and I have an Hispanic family living there. I really appreciate them as a really good renter, and they appreciate me as a really good landlord. So I think when you look at real people, they don't necessarily benefit from DEI programs. We just need to be cognizant of all the community members that are low-income or in need.
Candidate Hoven?
Thank you very much. My experience working as an immigrant, immigration advocate in our community, and specifically as a board member on Isaac, I have found that the city of Fort Collins has worked well in listening to the members of our community and making sure that they drive decisions that really impact us all. And so I will continue to support the DEI efforts currently underway within the city of Fort Collins to really ensure that everybody's voices are heard and to really make sure that all community members can thrive.
Candidate Lane?
Hi. I think the fact that we're even asking the question means that there's still work to be done. I don't think that this is something that should be just stopped because we're good enough. I think that we need to continue pushing forward and making sure that language accessibility, cultural accessibility, and in general, those voices are absolutely heard. And I also believe that this is a larger DEI problem in the face of federal orders. Over the past year, we've seen a lot of institutions here in the city, not just city council, abandon their efforts in becoming Hispanic-serving institutions. And I think that it's incredibly important that not only does Fort Collins City Council set the precedent of this is something we prioritize, but we encourage people in our community to continue this work. Thank you.
Candidate Conway?
Yeah, so I think, you know, given what's going on at the federal level, it's more important than ever that Fort Collins continues its strong DEI program at the city. But I think we can't stop where we are now. I think what we need to be doing is going out into people's communities and having those conversations there. My one critique of the way the city approaches things sometimes is that the kind of outreach that they look for doesn't go and find people where they're actually living in their day-to-day life, make it easier for people of all different kinds to come. That could be somebody who only speaks Spanish. It could be a single mom. It could be lots of different things. Right now, the city ends up soliciting outreach from similar people. And so I'd like to see more programs where we reach out into communities rather than waiting for them to come to us. And that's the biggest thing I'd change in the city.
Candidate Gutowski?
I think in order for any citizen or any resident in Fort Collins to feel that they are included is to be invited to participate in the community and in our government. And I appreciate the efforts that are being made to invite potential Hispanic leaders to participate. Language is a barrier. The fact that in most meetings, translation is provided. That enables participation. But it's the idea of asking what it is that they need and then inviting them to be part of the solution, training how to deliver community comment, anything that would. And then the last thing quickly, to help them start businesses, but not only that, but to sustain businesses so that they can be part of the economic community of Fort Collins.
Candidate Montgomery?
Anyone who has actually spoken to the Spanish-speaking populations of Fort Collins would say, no, we are not doing our best. Working with Mi Vos and La Familia, we know that there is no Spanish translation for city council meetings. They've been asking for it. We also know that there are no translation services at the courthouse. So oftentimes, young men that have been arrested, they're just signing papers with no assistance from someone that understands their culture or their language. Then they get deported. ICE raids or ICE presence is still a very big concern for them. There's also a lack of Spanish-speaking doctors that are from their culture. We need to do better.
Candidate Montgomery, we're going to begin with you for the next question. This is about health care. How would you approach the potential loss of Medicaid coverage for some Laramie County residents? Don't mean to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
How would you approach the potential loss of Medicaid coverage for some Laramie County residents?
I would direct them to the resources that we do have here, such as the Health District. We also have vaccine trucks that also provide vaccines of different kinds. There's also, PSD also provides some services for children who are of all income levels and their families may not be able to afford insurance of any kind. We also have Planned Parenthood here in Fort Collins that provides a bevy of services as well. Our VA clinics in Cheyenne and Loveland also provide services. We are fortunate in Fort Collins to have a lot of health care services available to us at free or low costs.
Candidate Gutowski?
Yeah, with the loss of Medicaid, we have to fall back on our alternative services. That would fall back on the county that provides health services for people who don't have the means to pay for them. It's a conundrum that I think everybody is facing and how we can provide for folks in a world where the resources are diminishing. And we just have to be creative in terms of finding ways that we can provide for these folks if their federal programs are not being provided.
Candidate Conway?
Yeah, so I think it's a huge issue that I think has been brought by the reckless actions of the Trump administration. I think unfortunately in Fort Collins, as a city, there's not a ton we can do directly. But what we need to do is partner with Laramie County, with the state, to make sure our low-income residents are receiving as much health care as we can possibly provide. I mean, I think at root, what we need to be doing is getting back to basics as a city. We can't afford to make housing more expensive, to make getting around more expensive, to cause people to drive long distances all the time, given the economic challenges that people are facing. Like, we need to do our job well, and that's going to make everything a little bit easier for each and every person in Fort Collins. And then we need to be partnering with people at the county and the state with the resources that could actually tackle this health care issue.
Candidate Lane?
Thank you. So I think it's really important to note that before Trump's big cuts came through and we had to go into special session, legislature actually approved a study to see if we could do a single-payer health care system here in Colorado. Given the recent cuts and what our budget structure currently looks like, I think that a really important factor in this is that everyone up here and every elected official should be educating, standing with teachers, and advocating against Tabor so that we can free up more local budget to go towards supplementing our health care systems. In light of that, I do absolutely believe it needs to be a priority in Fort Collins moving forward to not only preserve what public health systems we have, but expand on them for both our young and old communities here, really reaching the gamut of regular, everyday flu-shot health care to reproductive health care. It's incredibly important that we are prioritizing that moving forward.
Candidate Hoven?
Thank you very much. I think what's most disturbing about this possibility is the impact it will directly have on women and children. It will be devastating to many of our most vulnerable community members. So it will be incumbent upon us to work together and also continue our relationships with our representatives at the federal level, at the state level, at the county level. This will create a dire situation for women and children specifically. And our community, we have demonstrated our resilience plenty in the past, especially during the pandemic. We have the capability of doing it again, and we will have to activate all of our resources together to really make sure that these cuts do not devastate, have the devastating impacts that they possibly could. Thank you.
Candidate Yurash?
So the Health Department provides vaccinations to at-risk communities, people who can't afford it. And I think that's important, that we provide at least a minimum level of some kind of services. You know, it's against the law to deny emergency services to anybody who needs them, regardless of their ability to pay. So it's really the other kind of services that are being affected. And unfortunately, I have to say that at the federal level, they have to find somewhere to cut. And Medicaid is one of those places. To what extent can we make up for that? I think the Health District is separate from the Health Department, and they tax hospitals and could potentially provide some of those services instead of just referring people to Medicaid, which is what they normally do. So there are some things that could be done.
Candidate Smith?
This is a very difficult issue. I definitely don't have an answer to exactly what we need to do. I do know that we need to respect all of our residents. And those who are going to be losing Medicaid coverage still need medical attention. And so the city is going to need to partner with the county. The city is going to need to lobby the state to try to get the state to step in. I think this will be a huge cost shift from the federal government to the state, to the county, to the local economy. And we're going to need to face that, recognizing that these residents have a right to medical care, just like anyone else, and we need to do what we can to provide it to them.
Candidate Fudge?
Yeah, this is going to be a major issue. And the reason for the partnerships that I talked about earlier, the county is not going to be able, not going to be in a position to backfill really any of the reductions that have been made at the state and federal level. The impact on the county could be between $2 and $5 million of increased costs to administer SNAP and Medicaid, those programs that the federal support has cut. Working with the Health District of Northern Laramie County and with the County Health Department is a great idea. Lobbying the state certainly to prioritize services for our residents is also a great idea. But developing these partnerships with these larger institutions, UC Health and others, is going to be critical. We may have to reprioritize some of our funding to help provide these services to our residents. And I feel like I'd be in a good position to help make that happen.
Candidate Gutowski, we'll start the next round with you. And this is a question about budget. What impact do you think recent federal budget decisions will have on local government? How would you address those impacts?
Wow, where to begin, right? It's difficult to look at that when we're faced with our immediate budget crisis. And that is a lack of sales tax and income that's impacting how we do business in Fort Collins. The federal impact on us is not nearly as important as the problems that are impacting us right now. Those of you who have read the paper have noticed that the city manager's office has done an excellent job of assessing where we need to make our cuts, and they're not going to be pleasant. I do support the fact that there will be no personnel let go. And I think that that's probably the best news that we have out of a dismal budget cycle.
Candidate Montgomery?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes. What impact do you think recent federal budget decisions will have on local government? How would you address those impacts?
Well, we're already seeing the impacts locally in terms of like our economy being softer. So for instance, tariffs are making operational costs for small businesses go up, costs for groceries going up, people are holding on to their money. They're not spending it. Therefore, we're not getting that sales tax revenue. So now we're facing hard decisions with our city's budget. And now we're looking at having to not only make cuts, but now we're looking at things like paid parking in Old Town, probably going to have to look at other ways to raise revenue. And that is also bottom line, going to hit the wallet of people here in Fort Collins. And it's kind of like death by a thousand cuts, but also we need to raise revenue as well.
Candidate Fudge?
So the impacts of federal funding on local government are going to be pretty profound. I've touched on a lot of them thus far. It's not really just the impacts that are codified in the Big Beautiful Bill, but the absolute chaos at the federal level that hopefully has abated a little bit. But CSU, for instance, never really knows if their grant funding is going to be maintained at any given time. So budget resilience and working together again is absolutely critical among the institutions like the city, Laramie County, the state. Of course, state funding is tied partially to federal tax law, and so state funding has been impacted as well. We will need to prioritize city services, especially, my priorities would be public safety, parks, recreation, and culture, and affordable housing and infrastructure of those things. Also, a piece of that, it's not going to solve the whole problem, is making our city more efficient, freeing up our employees from onerous processes and rules, and really enabling them to get the job done with less.
Candidate Smith?
I think we just tried to talk a little bit about the Medicaid cuts and the cost shift that's happening to the states and the local government. In addition to that, the reduction in the federal grants and the uncertainty around federal grants is going to have a significant impact on us. We have some ambitious climate goals. We have some ambitious climate goals. The federal government says you can't use the word green now. So helping us achieve those goals isn't going to happen, and so we're going to have to do more with our local funds. And unfortunately, that means we will probably have to kind of reset our expectations on when we can achieve these goals. I think we can still make progress, but we have to be realistic about the affordability we have locally to achieve those goals.
Candidate Yurash?
So I just want to say that I support Tabor, the Taxpayer Bill of Rights, because it limits the amount of tax increases that are imposed upon our taxpayers. Because you can see that there's all these needs, oh, we need to do this, that, the other. But there's a limit to how much we can afford. And so trying to like charge for downtown parking as a means of raising revenue just seems absurd to me because it will impact our businesses. You look at what's happened in San Francisco, where they took parking away, those businesses died. Restaurants that were operating for 100 years had to close because their patrons could no longer park in front of their businesses. So let's look at really what services are essential and support those infrastructure-type needs, and don't use parking or utilities as a means to fund your pet projects.
Candidate Hoven?
Thank you very much. I agree very much with what candidate Fudge has been discussing, that it will be very devastating to our community. And again, I've mentioned that we have demonstrated our resilience before. It will be so important that we make sure our budget really reflects our values and really protecting those core services that continue to allow everyone to thrive. So I, we're going to have to be working together. We have to work with experts, and we really have to continue to really protect those vital resources that our community needs. Thank you.
Candidate Lane?
Hi, yes, thank you. So without being able to reform our taxation system here in Colorado, the budget is going to take a really big hit from federal cuts. I personally don't think it's right that billionaires in Vail are getting taxed the same flat rate as someone on the poverty line, but we're going to have to move on from that. So I think that it's really important that at the city level, we are reevaluating where our budget is going and creating a list of priorities moving forward and funding those priority systems. So our social programs, our medical programs, affordable housing, making sure that we are actually serving and supporting the community here with the budget that we currently have is going to be priority number one.
Candidate Conway?
Yeah, so I think the budget cuts at the federal level are going to have a massive impact on Fort Collins, and they already are. We've seen, already we've seen cuts at the USDA. Conservation work and environmental workers are being targeted as well. We've also seen the impact of tariffs on local businesses, which is going to be absolutely devastating. So what we need to do in Fort Collins is make sure that we are staying flexible and thinking about what could come down the line, and that means staying true to our values when we're thinking about budgets. We need to lead with what we think is the most important, and that's prioritizing the services that keep Fort Collins the place it is. So parks, public safety, affordable housing, all those kinds of things I think are absolutely crucial. And so we need to just continue monitoring the federal situation and hope it doesn't get any worse.
Okay, let's break things up a little bit with a lightning round, and Candidate Conway will begin with you. In one word, how would people who know you describe you? One word?
Be thoughtful.
Candidate Kautowski?
Kind.
Candidate Montgomery?
Funny.
Candidate Fudge?
I like thoughtful as well.
Candidate Smith?
Integrity.
Candidate Yurash?
Engineer.
Candidate Hoven?
Courageous.
Candidate Lane?
Earnest.
Okay, we'll go back to longer answers for the next question. And in this one, Candidate Lane, we're going to start with you. And this is about housing. What actions would you support to improve housing affordability while balancing growth and environmental considerations? Would you consider rent stabilization if the state legislature lifted the ban?
Yeah, I would absolutely consider it. I think that there are steps to take first, because currently it's not on the table. We need to be looking at creating a bigger supply of housing here in the city, so both in high density, and making sure that we are actually growing intentionally with the needs of the community. And then looking at if down the line, those sorts of rezoning, mixed-use zoning, permitting processes, and reform of some city guidelines is not sufficient. We absolutely need to step in because we have a huge renter population here in the city. We have a huge amount of young people that come here and go to CSU, who are struggling to be able to afford here, and I don't want to lose them to other institutions. I think it's critical that we prioritize absolutely everyone here, and we look at doing everything possible to make it happen.
Candidate Conway?
Yeah, so I think one of the biggest misconceptions is that there's some kind of conflict between infill housing and the environment. The modern environmental movement is pushing as hard as it can towards infill housing precisely because it's the most environmentally sustainable way to house people. And so we have this win-win-win opportunity where we can drive affordability, where we can improve our quality of life by making things more walkable, where we can preserve water, and we can stop sprawl from cutting into our wildlands, into our agricultural lands. The status quo right now is that my friends where I work get pushed further and further out of the city into surrounding towns like Severance, Longmont, Greeley, and drive long distances in every day to work. That creates traffic, which exacerbates climate issues. It cuts into agricultural and wildlands and all these things, and so we absolutely need to make it easier to build inside the city where we have more environmentally friendly environment for that kind of thing.
Candidate Kautowski?
Thing that hasn't been talked about is the fact that over the last three years, the city of Fort Collins has grown less than 1%. So the idea of high-density infill, abundant housing that ends up being unattainable is not the answer. Well, the answer is to focus on the people who truly need it, and those are the income-qualified folks who can barely put food on the table and definitely need housing that meets their needs. So one of the things, I want to quote a middle-income project north of town, and they are using Proposition 123 Equity Fund for renters. And I love the idea because it is providing an opportunity for renters to donate to their own equity fund so that they are actually building wealth. And if they're going to be renting, say, for the rest of their lives, they are earning equity just as a homeowner would, and I love that idea, and I hope that we promote more middle-income housing.
Candidate Montgomery?
If the CCIP capital tax or the Community Capital Improvement Program is renewed in November, 10 million of that would go towards affordable housing. And I would really like to see a low-interest revolving home loan fund for first-time home buyers be a part of that by partnering with local banks, and that would also go for mobile home units as well. I would also like to see land banking with CSU, PSD, and other major employers in the area. And part of our work is going to have to be subsidized housing for people, like disabled populations or seniors on fixed incomes. But also, we're going to have to work with local developers to get more middle-income housing.
Candidate Fudge?
I would echo all the great ideas that I've heard from our friends in District 1, and I would go further by adding the city can get out of the way in a lot of areas, especially with processes, development standards, design standards, things of that nature. I think there's a room to allow developments to be feasible while still meeting our community character. If we can get 75% of what we want out of a housing development, which is affordability and environmental friendliness, then we don't necessarily need to make 100% perfection, be the enemy of the good. The city has a roadmap to become compliant with Proposition 123 for Affordable Housing. I think that that roadmap and those process changes can be applied to other development standards as well. And so really just finding flexibility and being a partnership, being a partner with the development community to get projects done quicker and more feasibly.
Candidate Smith?
I think part of the question was around rent stabilization. That is not legal currently, but if the state were to legalize that, yes, I think that is one of the tools that we should utilize. We really need to be looking at almost anything that we can think of. Ideally, we look at removing barriers to home ownership rather than rent. And we can do that by leveraging state and local funds for down payment assistance and creating a revolving loan fund. We also need to look at innovative housing solutions like townhomes on land trusts and cooperative housing, like they do in Europe. We need to partner, we need to find some partners to develop our existing land bank properties. And I think, as I said, we need more homes. That's really obvious to everyone. Thank you.
Candidate Yurash?
Well, I'd like to make sure I'm addressing the full question, so could you repeat it for me, please?
What actions would you support to improve housing affordability while balancing growth and environmental considerations? Would you consider rent stabilization if the state legislator lifted a ban?
So as an owner of three rental condos, I understand what it is like to be a landlord, and I also know that in the cities that have tried rent stabilization, it's failed miserably, and you end up with really poor-looking properties that don't get maintained. So I'm absolutely against rent stabilization. It's never worked. So there is that. There is not enough water to continue this kind of growth. You know, there are high-rise developments in Denver. Is it any cheaper to live in Denver than Fort Collins? No, it's not. All three of my kids live in Southern California. Is it any cheaper to live there with all the housing they have? No, it's not. So it's really dangerous for people who have no experience in being a housing developer, thinking they can solve this kind of problem in this way. This kind of growth is absolutely bad for our community.
Candidate Hoven?
Thank you very much. 65% of the residents in District 5 are renters, which makes them more vulnerable to other risks. And when communities are, when community members are vulnerable to multiple risks, they no longer feel safe. And that does not work for our community. So, in fact, yesterday I was actually visiting with a resident who cannot afford to move out of his house. He cannot afford to downsize because he can't afford the next option. So it is extremely important to continue to work with housing experts to develop the ideas of neighborhood centers and really focus on our 15-minute city goals, because that supports our environment and that supports the most vulnerable people in our community, but it also just allows everyone housing options that work well for them. Thank you.
Candidate Hoven, we're going to start this next round with you, and let me read the question. It's about transport bus service. What steps would you take to, first, ensure that transport is a reliable, convenient, and accessible means for daily commutes throughout the city? And second, ensure that the long-term financial stability of the, ensure the stability of the transport system?
Thank you. This is a pretty complex question, and I did have the good fortune of hearing the Transportation Optimization Plan and understanding where the city is headed. I think it is a concern of mine that federal transportation grants may not be accessible, and if that is the case, it will be really important that we work as closely as we can locally to make sure that we're addressing high-need areas, high-rider areas, and evaluate in the budget of how much we can, how much cost the city's budget can absorb in order to create equitable access for everyone, so they can get to their jobs and get to school, which really helps, again, the community thrive. Thank you.
Candidate Yurash?
So it's pretty obvious, if you've ever driven around the CSU campus area, that there is definitely a need for bus transportation around the CSU campus, and I think we need to maintain that service. And however, if you look at the buses that go on Prospect east of La May or on Harmony, they're empty all the time, and you don't see any transparency from the city on what the budget is like for some of these routes, or the transport as a whole and how the money is being spent. So you really need to have more transparency in the budget to understand what to do. But we should try using smaller buses on the routes that are not as used to try to save money. I was here when MAX was put in. That ridership is very low. The huge station itself is never used, so be careful on how the money is spent.
Candidate Smith?
I think we have to look at what we did with MAX, and yes, we did have a large federal grant there. But what we did was we built a reliable, effective busing system, and then we saw how the community responded to that. We don't have that reliable, convenient busing system throughout the community. I think we do need to establish rate bus schedules that are effective at getting folks from one side of town to another before we can expect them to simply, our residents to decide to take the bus instead of driving themselves. We can't suspend routes because we're not willing to pay drivers prevailing wages. We have to show that the rates will, the rides will be there, the buses will be there before folks are willing to really cut that by car court, so.
Candidate Fudge?
So I'm absolutely interested in protecting the free fares for transport. I know there's a lot of people who rely on transport and the bus system. I would be interested in optimization studies as well. There's probably improvements that could be made to that. Using smaller buses or different equipment is a great option. I think we can find consensus on that. I know that people really rely on it. In my work with the library district, we're moving from Council Tree Library down to the Southeast Community Center, and one of the big issues that has come up is bus access to the new Southeast Community Center, which surprised me because I didn't know that so many folks took the bus to the library. There are people, even in my neighborhood near Fossil Ridge, who I see every morning on my way to work, waiting at bus stops, and I know that they're going shopping, they're going to the doctor, they're going to work. I've spoken with some of them. So protecting the transport system is vital. 29% of its budget comes from the federal government, and so it'll be likely that we'll need to find resources for that, but I'm definitely interested in protecting it.
Candidate Montgomery?
We know that the state had to cut transportation budget this year as well as the federal government, but there is talk right now about micro-transit for Fort Collins because there are underserved areas in Fort Collins where the roads in neighborhoods might not be wide enough to accommodate a bus. Kind of thinking about an Uber approach for ridership, especially in Spanish-speaking neighborhoods. Dial-a-Ride is being tested and will be rolled out soon. Dial-a-Ride is being tested and will be rolled out soon for disabled individuals, especially if they have wheelchairs that are really bulky and may need assistance. So we are coming up with more ways to serve Fort Collins residents.
Kenneth Kytowski.
Sorry, got to turn it on. I agree with several people who have said what I was going to say, and that was the idea of micro-transit. I think that using the smaller buses in areas, not necessarily that where they can't access, but also just areas that are not necessarily as actively participating in riding the buses would be a way to get people to where they need to be and utilize the other buses in other areas. I really, really want to promote getting our transport, our transportation, to the northern reaches of the city, to Hickory, for example, to the Tres Colonias, for example. I think that that would vastly improve the ridership because we need to bring those folks into where the services are.
Kenneth Conway.
Yeah, so I grew up in the northeast part of the city. And I would really love to see transport make sure that it's serving North College in a really profound way. I think there's huge opportunities. I mean, the number one thing about these kind of transit options is that you need to have frequent and reliable service. As somebody who's ridden the bus and public transit to get around in many times in my life, if you know that if you miss the bus, it's going to be 30 minutes until the next one comes, you cannot rely on that to get to work, to go to doctor's appointments, to go get groceries. We have to make it so that transit is the better alternative than driving in parts of our cities. And that's going to be a real challenge. But I think part of it has to do with, we need to bring some of the things that people want to go to closer to where people live. So I really support making it easier to start a business, you know, in your home and have a little bakery where you can walk to in your neighborhood or a coffee shop and things like that. And I think that will make it easier to have places that transit will go.
Kenneth Lane.
I wish the bus came every 30 minutes. So where me and my coworkers are to get into work, it's once an hour. And in most of District Five, there are actually a lot of transit gaps where there are just some routes where buses don't go, where they need to go where kids, parents are trying to get their kids to and from places, and they're waiting out there for an hour after they've walked for 30 minutes to get to where the bus stop is. So we absolutely need to close those gaps and look at not just making right-around CSU campus somewhere that's frequently serviced, but promote that further reaches of town as well so that people have buses as a viable option. I'd argue that a lot of reason people aren't using the free, environmentally-friendly transit system is because it doesn't actually get them where they need to go without taking, like, three hours. Where I used to live, it would have taken me two hours to get into work when it was a 10-minute drive, which was absolutely ridiculous. So I think that...
Okay, we are almost at the end of the forum. We have time for one final question before the final statements and wrap-up. And Kenneth Urrash, you'll be first for this question. And it's about energy. What is your position on how the new PRPA, the Platt River Power Authority, gas turbines? On the turbines?
Right. So I was a member of the Fort Collins Electric Board, and I toured Rawhide Power Station, which is coal-fired. We're going to shut that down. So the question is in reference to the Integrated Resource Plan, which was approved by the board. The mayor of Fort Collins is on the board for the PRPA, Platt River Power Authority. And I support the Integrated Resource Plan, which includes the building of the gas-fired peaker plant. Because if you don't do that and you try to go to 100% renewable, you will double your electric rate. The ratepayers do not want to have their rates doubled. So we still, during this process where we shut down the coal-fired plant and build the gas-fired peaker plant, which only runs on dark, calm days or really hot days, that that's the low-cost solution. And we'll still be adding more renewable energy to the total portfolio through that Integrated Resource Plan, which I support.
Kenneth Hoven.
Thank you very much. I believe it is definitely a step in the right direction to get us to 100% renewal. And I will want to learn more. Thank you.
Kenneth Lane.
I am quite frankly disappointed with the move. I think that it was a step in the wrong direction towards our sustainability goals. This was a major thing that the city was putting in place, that we wanted to be 100% electric, that we were going to be offering grants for people to get to electric. And I think that going backwards and investing a ton of money in these new natural gas lines all over the city, as well as a natural gas plant, is antithetical to the values in Fort Collins.
Kenneth Conway.
Yeah, so absolutely, I think we need to, you know, phase out, you know, dirty fossil fuel as quickly as possible. But I also understand that we need to protect ratepayers. We need to have a reliable and a cheap system as well. I mean, I'm excited about trying to develop a future in which we have an abundant level of energy provided by solar, provided by wind. And I think there's lots of ways to make distributed energy much easier and more available to the people of Fort Collins. I think we have barely scratched the surface in terms of getting batteries into people's houses to reduce peak load and make their energy cheaper. I think we can make it easier to put solar panels on houses. I think we can make it easier for Fort Collins to get the kind of green energy that it deserves.
Kenneth Kytowski.
I think as we, as we work toward, as we transition toward 100% renewable, I do support having the gas turbine plant as our backup should we experience what's called the dark calm, which other areas of the country have experienced. I would like to see us, but only as a backup, I would like to see us move towards storage in batteries. But I'd especially like to see us work toward making it easier for residential, for residential solar, because I think that that's going to assist in our move toward renewable.
Kenneth Montgomery.
I think considering the budget challenges that we're facing, it makes sense why we made that decision. But I think that renewable energy is a journey, and we're always going to be making progress, making innovations with it. I don't think we'll ever completely be done with finding new ways to power our homes, power our cities, and making our environment better and lessening our footprint. I do agree with Ms. Kytowski that I would love to see solar more in our cities and in our homes. If I could snap my fingers and have solar in my house or on my roof, I would in a heartbeat. And I hope we get to a point where it's not so expensive for people to have that.
Kenneth Fudge.
Yeah, I would agree that it was a good and necessary step in the intermediate term to provide some reliable energy and to protect the ratepayers as well. I agree with what else has been said as far as doing what we can to provide incentives to move towards more renewable energy over the long term, especially in city facilities and things of that nature.
Kenneth Smith.
I think echoing many of the comments there, I think it was a reasonable compromise today, not ideal certainly, but reasonable. I think we have made significant progress on our goal to get to 100% renewable. And we've done so while keeping our rates amongst the lowest in the state, to date at least. And so I think, I think we've balanced the desire to go to 100% renewable with the economic impacts of just doing that in a, in a good way. I do think that I would like to see a bit more kind of oversight of PRPA. Our board members are there to serve our community's interests. And so I think we should have more open dialogue about what the decisions are being made. Thanks.
Well, thank you, candidates, for your thoughtful answers this evening. So next, we're going to turn to your 60-second concluding remarks. And we're going to begin with you, candidate Lane, and then Kenneth Hoven across the dais. Candidate Lane.
So I want to thank everyone for their time here today. And I want to reiterate, I think that it's really important that we make decisions now in Fort Collins that are going to reflect the needs of the city at large moving forward. I think that affordability is incredibly important. We actually did recently surpass California for per capita percentage that we are paying for housing in Colorado. And I can't believe that that's a real statistic, and here we are. So I think that public funds need to be reallocated towards the social services, like affordable housing, health care, protecting our public transport in our vulnerable communities, protecting our city so that we don't have ICE here, that we advocate very strongly that that is not something we're going to be okay with, that we actually take steps to become a trans-sanctuary city here. I think that it's all incredibly important, and I would like to see Fort Collins embody its value and move in that direction.
Kenneth Hoven.
I too would like to thank everybody for showing up tonight and thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. District Five is a special district, and it's loaded with superpowers. It houses a world-class education institution. It houses many young people and families. And I will use my skills and ability to continue to bring our most valuable resource together, which is our people, to continue to build a bright future for everyone and build the resilient community that Fort Collins has been. Thank you.
Kenneth Urrash.
You can find my website at www.stevuhrash.org to find out more about my positions. I am the only candidate in District Three who is not a government employee. And I've worked my entire career in the chip industry. I bring an engineering mindset to these kinds of challenges that we face so that we can really dive into the details and find meaningful answers. I support Tabor. I do not support increases in revenues. To me, financial sustainability is really financial sustainability for the citizens first, right? So trying to find additional revenue sources is not a good idea. We need to keep our electric rates low. And the, we should limit our higher-density housing build-out because we don't have the water for it. In places that do have high-rise, it's not cheaper to live.
Kenneth Smith.
I want to thank the League of Women Voters for having the forum. I want to thank everyone listening for your civic engagement. I think you've heard many similar answers from folks today up here. Hopefully, you found, heard a few things that distinguished me from the other candidates and that you would be interested in having those sorts of values represented on City Council. I'd be privileged to represent all of you on City Council. Please vote for someone on November for, and get your mail-in ballots in. As I said, I would appreciate it if you voted for me, but please vote. Thank you.
Kenneth Fudge.
Yeah, thank you again, everyone, for being here. And thanks to the League of Women Voters. We really appreciate this opportunity to lay out our vision. I just want to say that I'm not your typical government bureaucrat. I absolutely hate hearing, this is the way we've always done that. I like to look for new ways to do things. I agree with transparency in everything that the city does, especially with how we spend the taxpayers' money. Partnerships are going to be key to making it through the next three-plus, who knows how many ever years. And so dealing with those other institutions that provide so much to our community and having those relationships is really going to be important. I want, should I be elected to the City Council? I want to make sure that this is a welcoming city and that I'm responsive to my constituents' complaints and needs and wants and things like that. I agree, please do vote on November, in November. And if you don't find your way to make me your primary or first-choice candidate, I'd love to be your second-choice candidate. That's a very strange thing to say. So thanks a lot again. And my website is fudgeforfortcollins.com.
Kenneth Montgomery.
I'm running because I want to represent people that are not represented in our government. I grew up very working class, no brand-name snacks in the fridge, barely making it day-to-day. That's how I grew up. And so I really understand what it is like to struggle. And I don't think that our government right now really understands what people are going through right now. And so with everything increasing in costs and with housing and with just... 15 seconds, awesome. I just want to be somebody that says, "I'm for the people." And that's why my slogan is "With a Purpose for the People." Thank you.
Kenneth Kytowski.
Well, I got to tell you, I love my job. And I do it full-time. To me, it's more than meetings. I'm out in the community all of the time, participating with our community, with the community. I, as the incumbent, I truly believe that I have the wisdom, the time, the energy and experience to be your moderate voice on council. And I would welcome your first-choice vote on the ballot coming November. Thank you very much. And thank you for having the forum, by the way.
Kenneth Conway.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this on. I think these kinds of civic conversations are so important to our democracy. So, I mean, I think everyone understands that Fort Collins is a gorgeous city to grow up in, like I did, and to live in. But it's become increasingly unaffordable for regular people. You know, people deserve to be listened to when they say over and over to the government that affordability is our top priority. What are you doing to help me and my family? And so that's what I want to do as I'm running for City Council. You know, growing up in the northeast part of the city, one of the things you know is that the kinds of trail networks, natural areas, bike connections that other parts of the city has aren't always available in northeast Fort Collins. And we deserve elected leadership that knows that and that's going to fight for those resources and those connections and is going to take us in a new direction. And so that's what I hope to do. So I hope you'll, I'll be your first-choice vote. And if not, then maybe your second choice as well. So, thank you.
Well, candidates, thank you for helping us understand where you stand on the issues facing the Fort Collins City Council. To our audience, both here and at home, thank you for taking the time to become informed voters. Election Day for the City Council districts is Tuesday, November 4th. Council members in Districts One and Two with three candidates will be elected using a ranked voting method. The council member for District Three with two candidates will be elected by a majority of votes. You can find more information on the city's website. People can vote in person or by mail. The mail-in ballots are due by November 4th at 7:00 p.m. And note that postnarks do not count as received date. Polling places will be open on Tuesday, November 4th for in-person voting from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And the polling place addresses will be available on the Fort Collins City website and vote411.org. Again, the city website is HTTPS... excuse me, colon slash slash www.fcgov.com. Okay, just to clarify, I think I misspoke. In District Three, there are three people running. In District Five, it's two people running. Thank you for the clarification. Now, this brings us to the conclusion of the forum for the candidates running for the Fort Collins City Council Districts One, Three, and Five. And on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Laramie County, we thank you, candidates, for joining us, the League volunteers, the FCTV... for joining us, the League volunteers, the FCTV staff, and our audience for joining us this evening. I'm Mary Bowman. Let's go vote.